Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please continue standing while we have a moment of silence to honor those people who lost their lives 12 years ago today and 9/11. May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Ms. Antelis.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Poy.
Here.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yeah.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted September 5th, 2013, one at all schools, two Home News Tribune, three Cranberry Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, we will go to our student board members' reports, but before we give our reports, I'd like to welcome Ms. Corey Hayder as our new student representative to the Monroe Township Board of Education. And Corey, we look forward to having you join us for the next two years, and if there's any problems or questions, don't hesitate to ask any of us because we're here to help you. And thanks, welcome to Monroe. And we'll go with our reports.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francesca Sparanza, and I'm the Senior Board of Ed Representative for this year, and this is Corey.
Events taking place during the month of September. September 9th was the first day of school for students. September 11th and 12th are makeup pictures for underclassmen. September 13th, there is a half-day for students for Yom Kippur.
September 17th is back-to-school night at the high school. September 19th, there is a senior parent meeting in the media center at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will go to number seven on the agenda and have a presentation of our Certificate of Appreciation to Leah Wagner, and I will give this to Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I'm very proud this evening to present a Certificate of Appreciation to Leah Wagner. Leah donated over 2,000 pristine screen cleaners to our students and our staff members in our high school for cleaning their iPads, and the Certificate of Appreciation reads, "This certificate is awarded to Leah Wagner and the Monroe Township Library in recognition of the valuable contribution of the valuable, pristine screen cleaners to all Monroe Township students, grade nine through 12." So, Mrs. Wagner, thank you so much.
And we'd like to thank Ms. Wagner for her contribution to the Monroe School District, and this is just another way of shared services between the township and the Board of Education, and we continue to look for ways to have that partnership continue to grow and be positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight on the agenda, September 11th Remembrance by Our Chorus from the high school and the middle school, and I'm going to Mr. -- Dr. Gorman, do you want to handle this?
Come on up.
No, it's the high school chorus, and then we have the middle school that are going to present a couple of poems in remembrance of September 11th.
Thank you very much. That was absolutely beautiful. You guys done a fantastic job, and to the members of the public, we hope to have more opportunities to showcase the great things that our children do or our students do during this coming school year. So, this is just the beginning of what we're going to do.
This is Bisaki and some of our avid students from the seventh grade.
Okay.
And eighth graders.
So, I'm sure every -- or most of us remember exactly where we were 12 years ago, and I know that I was standing in room 12 of Applegarth Middle School when I heard what had happened on the day when the world stopped turning. And as a social studies teacher, I've found with every year that passes, it becomes more and more difficult for me to explain the events as my students grow further and further away from having any real memories of their own. So, two of my wonderful avid students are here joining me, representing their class of 23 students, and what they did on the first night of school is they went home and they interviewed their parents about what the world was like when it was still turning, before 9/11, and then they added their observations about what the world is like today, and we put it together as a group, very modified Diamante poem. They all contributed, and I have these wonderful ladies, Annalise Ortiz and Gabriela Jimenez, who are going to read this poem on behalf of their classmates to you.
Life in America, September 10th, 2001. Vulnerable, innocent, liberating, unassuming, blindsiding, denial, freedom, pride, World Trade Center, unsuspecting.
Then, September 11th, 2001.
Scrambling, suffering, chaos, heroes, Osama Bin Laden, hatred, rebuilding, uniting, praying, aware, vengeful, life in America, September 11, 2013.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bisaki, could you just turn around so that the board could -- Yeah. But every one of the students, the words on the top half before September 11th were all words contributed by their parents, and then the words on the bottom half were the words contributed by the students. So, it was a nice exercise in helping them to feel a little closer to what had happened. And we can leave this here with you if that -- Okay, thank you. And thank you, thank you, the students. Okay, we will go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our three-minute time limit.
Of course. Mark Klein, 53 Turnberry Drive. Talking about the closed session, and we discussed it when I was on the board, the closed session should be held at the beginning of the meeting between 6:00 and 6:30, call meeting to order, making it legal, and then hold the closed session. Last month, I sat from 6:30 through two closed sessions until 10:30, and with only two people left, along with myself. If you have a closed session, after -- not a closed session, if you have a public session after your closed session, if there's nobody here, no one can answer, ask questions and have them answered. I tried to clear up misconceptions and false information provided by the board concerning the two new Jack Morris developments. I had not planned to use my three minutes for this information, but was providing a service to keep all up-to-date on the applications, being that no one from the administration attends the planning board meetings. I am then rudely cut off after my three minutes, when all that was left was the explanation about the response to the letter I received from the governor. No one was going to ask questions, so as in the past, I could have gotten up again to discuss the response, but I chose not to because all I heard it was too late. If I may, the letter that I gave all of you at the last meeting was the letter I sent to the governor's office. I received a phone call from his head advisor concerning the inequity in funding that we have in this district, and what I was told is, number one, which we know, Mike knows, is the property value per student, which is ridiculous, because we have 50 percent adults with no children. The other thing they fall back on is the formula, which they can't even explain, and lastly, is the fact that the governor's been trying to change the Supreme Court to put people in that are going to follow the Constitution. That was the answer I got. I still have not given up. There's things in the works, but that's all I wanted to add last time for a minute, and I wasn't allowed to speak the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Madam President, my name is Ellen Noel, Nine Mine Road, Jamesburg, New Jersey. I'm here representing our members and especially seven cafeteria associates who are not rehired by the new food service provider, Metz Culinary. We're calling them the Monroe Seven. I am asking that you, as a board, intercede and investigate why Metz Culinary did not rehire our seven cafeteria associates who have been serving our children breakfast and lunch for combined 67 years. That's 18, 13, 12, 10, 6, 5, and 3 years as cafeteria associates here in the Monroe School District. We ask you to write a very grievous wrong and require Metz to rehire the seven. We ask you to require Metz Culinary to honor the promises they made to us. Metz Culinary promised on two occasions that all the associates would be rehired. The General Counsel of Metz Culinary, in a phone conversation with our NEA representative in mid-July, stated unequivocally that all associates would be rehired. Counsel for Metz stated that the company did not want to disrupt the employees, the union, or cause issues in the community. Unfortunately, they have. The second broken promise was made by the Vice President of Metz at our first negotiation session with our committee president, representing the association, and Bob Ockenbaum, Metz's Vice President and Food Service -- I'm sorry, Food Service Director Nancy Mitresak. All the start of the meeting on August 14th, the VP responded to our question, "Was it the intention of Metz to rehire all of our employees?" His answer, "Yes." But that was not to happen, for after short interviews by the company reps, letters were issued to all associates on August 28th. Seven associates were not rehired as promised. All others were rehired through many, had a change of jobs, and some a reduction hourly rate of pay. We met with the Metz on September 5th to demand the company to live up to their promise. They declined to do so, and that is why we are here tonight, to seek your assistance and -- so that the Monroe Seven can continue their careers here in the Monroe School District. One more point, we filed a complaint under BD Policy 9130 to the superintendent, asking the relief from this situation since it related to the operation of the district. He declined, claiming he lacked authority to intervene and that the board had no say in the matter. We disagree. Metz manager Chad Rockovitz stated that these decisions not to rehire the seven were made in consultation with the Food Service Director Nancy Mitresak, a school board employee. These decisions not to rehire positional changes were done by their gut feelings, quote-unquote, according to Rockovitz, and with involvement of the board's representative Nancy Mitresak. And so, we request that under our appeal process, the complaint be brought to your attention to properly resolve this dispute. It is extremely unfair for me and our union members, who have dedicated so many years to their jobs in feeding our children, developing relationships, we ask that you help us so that we may have a satisfactory resolution.
Thank you. I'm going to have our board attorney respond to that.
I've been asked to communicate to you and to the public that the board has no ability to tell the Metz Food Company what to do in terms of hiring people. There's a contractual relationship, as you know, I believe, between the Board of Education and Metz. The contract was awarded as a result of the proposal process. There simply is not the ability of the board to require Metz to take any action. I think that was one of the items that you asked the board to undertake. With respect to your reference to the policy, we can certainly look at the policy, but in the -- and carefully look at it in that regard, but Metz operates independent of the Board of Education with respect to its hiring and other employment practices, if you will. The board simply doesn't have the ability to do this under the terms of its contract with Metz.
Well, isn't it right that on page 20 of the agenda, the contract hasn't even been signed yet?
Let's look at -- excuse me. Please, go right ahead.
On June 19th, 2013, the board passed a resolution authorizing and appointing the food service management company being Metz. Tonight's a formality as part of the child nutrition application to the state to have a certified resolution of the final contract that's being presented to the board tonight as it's just been approved by the state of New Jersey. But the appointment of the food service management company, Metz, has been made and authorized and approved by the board already.
With all respect, Mr. Gorski, I had a meeting with you. You asked me to come into your office when I was picking up documents, and you had told me on that day that you would be pushing for all of the employees to be rehired.
Excuse me, but your three minutes are up, so if you would like to have a conversation with Mr. Gorski, you can call his office, and he'll be glad to speak with you. Because our -- our -- excuse me. I'm treating everybody the same way. Our board attorney, Ms. Lourde, has already responded to that, and that --
Well, that's fine, but if I got replies from my emails and my calls, then I wouldn't be so upset about this, but I don't get replies. So, you know, it's all well and good, but when they don't reply because --
Well, if you call Mr. Gorski's office, he will reply tomorrow.
Yes, I've tried that, thank you.
Correction. I spoke with Ms. Noel about two years ago about a completely separate issue before the RFP process had even begun. I don't know what she's misrepresenting here, but I tell you that if you contact me, which you haven't yet, I will be happy to speak with you.
You are very wrong about that, because I believe it was according to -- on Beth Gavin, I believe it was on, and that wasn't two years ago.
We're not going to continue this conversation right now. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Robert Roach, 18 Yorfield Boulevard. I have two questions. My first question deals with Board Action Item D. This is recommended that the board approve the attached list of student teachers for the 2013-2000 school year. I would like you, the board, to read the names of all those teachers. And the second question is the Business Administrator's Report E, E-Rate Funding, and you're just getting around to approving, who is it, Ontech Consulting, for the 2012-2013 year, which is, you know, as we well know, we're into '13-'14. I wonder why we're just doing this at this point in time. There are my two questions.
Mr. Gorski? And if Dr. Hamilton will answer the other question.
Yes. Mr. Roach, as far as the E-Rate Funding, as you astutely noticed, there's two appointments on here, E and F. E is a correction of a typographical error, misrepresenting the year, which has already been presented to the board. It was typed 11/12, I believe, and it was supposed to be for 12/13, so it's a correction of that typographical error, and also the approval and appointment of E-Rate Funding for the '13-'14 school year.
Thank you.
Dr. Hamilton is looking up the information you requested. Thanks.
See, that's one of the problems when you indicate an attached list, and, you know, we don't see anything, so it makes it difficult for the public to understand what's going on.
Mr. Tesler's going to read it?
Sure.
Would you like Mr. Tesler?
That will be fine.
Mr. Tesler, you can please read that list.
Good, Ari, you're the ball.
Let's see, hopefully, I apologize if I botch any some of these names, but there's five. Number one, Rita M.A.U.R.A. from Georgian Court. Dina P.O.C.H.O.P.I.N. from Georgian Court. Frankie V.I.C.I.N.I. from Keene. Joseph Nenora from Keene. And Francesco Di Stefano from Keene.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak to the agenda?
Good evening, Steve Ryback, 23 Riviera. I'd like to address the strategic plan goal number three. You mentioned that you're going to assess current and future facility needs. I think it's something that is so important, and I really applaud all of you for doing that. You know, we've talked about the, I'm going to call, uncontrolled growth in Monroe and the impact it's having with all these new students coming to the schools. You know, I know Mr. Poy brought this out, that when builders do demographic studies and present their plans to the planning board, et cetera, they don't consider available classroom space. I would ask that you in some way keep an ongoing communication with the town so that they understand what they're dealing with when they seek to give preliminary approval, excuse me, to a builder's plans, when no one's considering how much space is available in the school.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Robert Noel, Nine Mine Road, Jamesburg. In reference to the question that before, regarding the Metz Culinary contract, you indicated that there's a resolution to operate, but the contract has not been finalized and signed. Is that correct?
Mr. Gorski, is that correct?
For clarity, I'll read the resolution approved by the board on June 19th.
This is not going to count against my three minutes, correct?
No.
Thank you.
It is recommended that pursuant to NJSA 18A, 18A hyphen 5A 22, the Board of Education approved the appointment of Metz Culinary Management as the board's food service management company for the 2013-2014 school year in accordance with Metz Culinary Management's proposal, which satisfies the board's specifications and requests for proposals for food service management program and includes a guaranteed financial return of $95,582.60 for the 2013-2014 school year. Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary and the Board Attorney, acting on the board's behalf, are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the board.
I'll take my time back now. So then, you're actually indicating that the contract was not signed, but it was approved upon the RFP. The RFP was returned to the independent entities, yourself, your attorney, and their attorney reviewed, assigned by their corporate officials. The contract technically is in effect. You're operating in a contingency on that, on the agreement under the resolution, correct?
That's a lot of statements you just made. I'll try to address them as holistically as I can. This resolution appoints Metz Culinary Management as the food service management company. It authorizes the superintendent, Business Administrator Board Secretary, to engage in contracts with the company and approves them to begin services. What has not been formally approved yet is the final contract that was just approved by the state of New Jersey Child Nutrition Department, and as a formality, that's being presented to the board tonight and then will be sent to the state once it's executed with the certified resolution of tonight for the food service renewal application.
Excellent. Okay, so there was no contract. You're operating in a contingency that everything will be approved and everything will be signed, as was agreed upon in the RFP and the board's decision-making process.
The -- as you know, sir, and I don't think this --
I do know. I've been a publican for a long time.
No, I'm trying, I'm just trying to make a statement, as I know as a manner of speaking, that's all.
That's fine.
I know it is. As you know, I believe, the proposal folds into, right, we're all bound by the proposal if the proposal is accepted by the board, which the board accepted, as you know. So, that the board pursuant to the terms of the RFP, let alone the proposal itself, which was responsive to the RFP, doesn't have the ability to tell the vendor, in this case, Metz, who to hire, who not to hire. May I? Ultimately, I don't think this counts towards your time anyway. It shouldn't. Ultimately, it's the vendor that makes the decision about who to hire and who not to hire. So, we just don't see the ability of the board to engage and say, "You must rehire this person or that."
Thank you. You took it exactly where I wanted, where I wanted to take it, but if the vendor doesn't, if the Board of Ed has no say in the hire and fire, then why did the food services director tell Metz who to fire? Because it's not Metz that knows the individuals, it's the food services director, who's an employee of this board. That's where this needs to go. It wasn't Metz that terminated. It was the board that terminated through the acts of supervisor, and that was what statements had been made, so that's why I'm asking.
Would that life were so simple in that way, and what I mean by that is that you've drawn a straight line that really doesn't exist, if you will, and that is, and this is what I mean. What I mean is that Metz makes the final decision. Whatever consultation there may or may not have been with a board employee with respect to the operation, ultimately, Metz makes the decision. The board doesn't, the board staff member, the board itself, doesn't have the authority to, let's use the word veto, the decision of Metz with respect to hire someone, don't hire someone.
But they make a presentation to that, and they have to be held or should be held responsible, and should be, as requested before, looked into as to what was used to make that decision. A board, somebody represented this board and said that, that's why.
Well, and this is what you've been told that Metz said, or perhaps you've heard it said by a representative of Metz, but, you know, we can certainly look at that, but the reality is that irrespective of what anybody said, on behalf, any staff member for the board may or may not have said, or let's say may have said, to Metz, ultimately, the board staff member, the Board of Education, doesn't make the decision. The decision is Metz's decision.
I just asked for clarification, and I appreciate that, but like I said, we asked the board to look into if somebody misrepresented their authority or gave false information to, for personal purposes or means, is what I'm saying.
Now, that, that may be a reasonable question, and that certainly, I think, could be reviewed, but ultimately, it's not going to change, and I mean this respectfully.
I understand.
Ultimately, it's not going to change the bottom line. As we understand, well, the bottom line, it's not even as we understand it. The bottom line is that the vendor makes the decision, not the Board of Education.
Understand, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent. My name is George Seleda. I'm a representative for the Monroe Township employees, and I'd like to make a statement, perhaps get an answer to a couple of questions. First of all, as best as we know, every previous vendor in Monroe who took on an acquisition of the account has rehired all employees. That's number one. Number two, we put a complaint in, and the complaint read that the -- Number two, we put a complaint in, and the complaint read that the seven employees with eighteen years' experience, fifteen, thirteen, twelve, six, and five, were not rehired after being promised to be rehired. I'm the one who spoke to the General Counsel of Metz Culinary, Brian Buffalino. I spoke to him, and I said, Brian, in July, our folks are a little bit upset about whether they're going to be rehired or not. Would you let me know what the status is? And secondly, who will be the representative for Metz because we want to bargain a contract? A few days later, he got back to me, said, George, we will be rehiring all of our people. And to paraphrase Brian Buffalino, he said, we don't want to upset the community, the employees, or the union. I took that as a good faith statement by the General Counsel of a company that has five thousand employees and put that word out to our employees, our associates. Secondarily, we meet with the Vice President of Metz Culinary, Bob Augenbach, at a negotiating meeting on August fourteenth, and we say, Bob, our first concern is, are you folks hiring our people back, all of our people? Answer, yes, not just to me, but to my entire committee. Now, those promises are significant, and you have to look at that irrespective of whether you have no authority or not. There is an element of unfairness that you just can't let go by. With respect to Counsel's statement about we have nothing to do with the hiring or firing, I disagree with that. The RFP has in it a statement that's very significant, and if I can take a moment. It says that, let's see here, the LEA, Board of Ed, may require in writing the removal of an employee of the food service management company who violates health requirements or conducts him herself in a manner that is detrimental to the physical, mental, or well-being of students and staff. That's in the RFP. There's also a question in the RFP that says, would you discharge Metz Culinary? Would you discharge or transfer any employee at the request of the LEA without interruption of service?
Thank you. Your time is up, and I will let our attorney respond.
All right. The answer to it was yes. The Vice President of the company said, yes, that's how we responded. So based on our complaint and based on the unfairness it is, you folks have to at least talk about it and give us some relief to the extent that you can. I'm sorry, you wanted to interrupt me?
No, I certainly don't want to interrupt you.
Okay.
But I understand the time is, the time is expired.
Okay.
That's what I'm told. And we thank you for the information. We've heard, I certainly have heard you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak to the agenda? To the agenda?
Michelle Arminio, nine Nathaniel Street, candidate number five for the Board of Education elections. I would like to ask about the retroactive hiring. Can you explain why there are so many retroactive hirings? On V, page seven, following non-certified personnel on the following step guide. I mean, it's pages of some retroactive. It goes on to eight, nine.
Generally, the retroactive start dates generally happen between board meetings. And in this, in this instance, because the start of school happened since the last board meeting, we needed to get folks hired, and so they are being approved back too so that it can be paid back from day one.
It's only a few weeks since the last board meeting. What, two weeks?
We hire up until people take other offers, and sometimes offers aren't acceptable, so that's not at all unusual.
So how many new hires have there been since the last board meeting, please?
I wouldn't be able to give you that off the top of my head.
Okay. Will there be anybody on the Board currently that will have to recuse themselves from any of the voting resolutions this evening?
Mr. Kaufman?
Mr. Kaufman? Okay.
Anyone else?
No. Okay, and can it explain, can you explain why Mr. Kaufman will have to recuse himself from?
Mr. Kaufman, would you like to answer that? Is there somebody on the agenda, family member on the agenda that you will have to, he has a family member?
He has a family member on the payroll. Okay. Also, on resolution, page, the closed session resolution, item sixteen, I believe it's page twenty, very often we have grievances, and that's a pretty nondescriptive issue for closed session. Can you elaborate on that?
That is the description that we got from our Board Attorney.
What reporter are you referring to?
Closed session resolution, and the only thing it says is, Board to receive attorney advice in relation to Board grievance issues. That's very vague.
Governance, governance issues.
Oh, sorry, governance issues. Oh, governance issues. I apologize. I still didn't want the question answered. Why does that rise to the level of a closed session?
Madam, you want me to answer this, or?
Well, I would rather the attorney answer it since it's a legal issue. You're here, we're paying for it.
I think the appropriate decision with respect to who should answer a question should be maintained by the Board President, and I understand she's asked Mr. Gorsky to respond. I'm not shy about responding, but I think I just want to follow the rules.
Okay.
When the Board receives attorney advice, it rises to a confidential standard that is a closed session item, and this particular one is for the Board to receive governance issue advice from the attorney, and that is a closed session eligible discussion.
How the Board receives governance, so in other words, how the Board is supposed to behave?
Specifically with respect to governance implicitly, when used in this context, means with respect to appropriate legal, excuse me, procedural issues and the legal piece of that.
Okay, so that's sort of my point. A procedural issue should be able to be discussed in public. It doesn't seem to rise to the level of a closed session. I mean, I have the law here, and it doesn't seem to be one of the exceptions of the Open Public Meetings Act.
What is an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act is receiving attorney advice, and that's one of the, what's going to happen here this evening with respect to a number of matters.
Okay, and then will that, will you be completing that this evening? Will it be resolved issue in your estimation? Well, if you, whether there's a resolution or not, if you complete the discussion and it's over, my question is, will it be able to be deliberated and spoken about in public?
The answer with respect, as you probably know, with respect to closed session discussions, when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Right.
You know, then it's, then it's released to the public. I don't know when that's going to be, that frankly, the judgment would be made based on the circumstances at the time. So I can't tell you that it would, I don't, A, I don't make the decision, I give the advice, obviously, but B, whether or not it would be released at some point would depend upon when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tom Notstein, fifteen Nathaniel Street. In regards to the closed session, there's always a concern with closed session resolutions because this Board, as it knows, has been sued in the past, and they lost. So when it comes to closed session, there is a very tight standard that needs to be followed. I disagree with the Board Attorney, quite respectfully, when she says that any type of advice from an attorney is closed session. That's not accurate according to the Open Public Records, I mean, the Open Public Meetings Act. The advice has to be such that if it was public, it would harm the Board, such as real estate transactions, personnel issues, anything of that nature that has to be kept private. Simple advice to a Board does not necessarily have to be kept private. Additionally, on the agenda, it has to be such detail that the public can actually access information, such as a docket number if there's a court case pending, et cetera. Could you please respond to that concern?
The, obviously, the Board isn't going to talk in closed session this evening about particular pending litigation because if it were, the docket number, the name of the case, and the venue in which it was pending would be on the agenda or should be on the agenda. But there are a number of issues involving, if you look at one of the exceptions, there are, is it exception with respect to matters involving individuals and matters of privacy that don't get out into the public, and there are sometimes situations in which, like this evening, there, those matters are matters as to which attorney advice may be sought. We have determined to call it more broadly governance issues, but I've more specifically described it to you now.
So it's a personnel issue more so?
Not a personnel issue, because remember, if you're going to have a personnel issue, you're going to have to rice whoever you're going to be talking about, and that's not what I'm saying. But this could also involve matters with respect to a Board member issues, Board member issues vis a vis privacy matters and the like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And with all due respect, we had attorney advice before we put this on the agenda for a closed session. Anyone else wishing to speak to the agenda?
Marianne Lester, forty-four Avenue I. I have a question on page thirteen under the adult education. For example, the first one, watercraft and safe boating, you're paying him fifty-five dollars per person that signs up, is that correct?
No. Oh, may I?
Of course.
No, the fees for those instructors are paid by those who register for the course. The Board does not, does not pay for that.
Okay, because it just says fifty-five dollars. I thought that was per person because the person signing up is paying eighty dollars, and I was wondering where the additional twenty-five dollars is going.
Those, the cost of the adult ed program is sustained by the people who take advantage of that.
So what's the fifty-five for again?
The fifty-five dollars is the registration of the fee that is charged for the participants in that course.
Okay, but in the brochure, it says eighty dollars.
There may be a registration, I don't have that in front of me, but there may be a registration fee associated with that, which applies to some courses.
I don't think it's that high. There is not every single one, but a lot of these are, they're saying fifty-five dollars per person, and in the actual brochure, when you go online, it's eighty dollars. So I was just wondering where that extra money is all going, and there's quite a few that that applies to. Can somebody find out for me?
Glad to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gorsky, do you have?
Yeah, I might be able to help. The action item I is a recommendation that the Board approve the following classes, instructors, dates, and salaries for the adult ed full session. So those salary amounts are for the instructors. If that doesn't correlate exactly to the charge per person for the course, there are other overhead costs involved, such as supplies, the use of building charge. In general, the adult education program is designed to be a community service, whereas the revenues received from the class participants equal the costs involved so that the Board does not contribute any general fund monies towards the program.
Okay, but if this is then the extra, if they make any extra, that would go towards the cultural commission? That extra overhead, even if it's being held, say, in the school?
If they make any extra, it just goes to cover all the overhead, including supplies that may be consumed in the classroom process or the usability.
But that goes to the cultural commission, not to, like, if we're supplying, say, a classroom for something, you don't get the extra money, the school doesn't, the cultural commission gets that money?
If the, if the use of building venue is the Monroe Township School facilities, we would certainly keep the money.
And you bill them for that at the end of these, every, then every?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Take less than three minutes. Michelle Arminio again. The New Jersey S.A. ten colon four dash twelve, when it talks about any matter involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, et cetera, it also talks about that the individual, well, let me just say, let me just read it, current public officer or employee employed or appointed by the public body, unless the individual employees or appointees whose rights could be adversely affected, request in writing that such a matter or matters be discussed at a public meeting. I think you failed to say that, and I want the public to be assured that if someone who, if someone's going into closed session and they choose to have their matter brought before the public, that they indeed have a right to do that under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Ma'am, that's absolutely right, and that is specifically what I referred to when I said earlier, a Rice notice. The language to which you're referring or, you know, reading arises from a Superior Court case involving an employee named Rice. I don't remember which Board of Education or which public entity was involved. And in a Rice notice, the Board of Education has an obligation to say, the Board will conduct a public meeting on, what's today, September eleventh, and during the court, in two thousand thirteen, during the course of the meeting, the Board will retire to closed session to discuss a matter that may affect your employment status. Period. The Board has no duty under the, under the Rice case to say, and if you want it in open session, you can have it in open session. That's implicit, it's an implicit right of the employee, but you're absolutely right, but it arises, what I mentioned earlier, with the Rice case is my shorthand for saying what you just said.
Well, that's sort of my point. The employees very often, or whoever is going, you're going to close session, are usually not aware of their, their right to have that deliberated in public. So I just think that needs to be made clear.
That's a good point, but most of the employees, in my experience, not all, but most of the employees in my experience are represented very ably by the appropriate labor association and have received that advice. But, you know, I think you raise a good point.
Thank you. And the last thing I'd like to say with, again, all due respect to our attorney, that during Mr. Notstein mentioned, PATH versus Board of Education in two thousand and seven, our attorneys, as able as they are, did lose the case. So we do have, sometimes, you know, there's attorneys on either side, so just asking attorney for their position doesn't always mean it's the right one. So I'd like to take that as a consideration.
I think your point's well taken. Attorneys being human beings are not always perfect. Having said that, the case, the PATH case to which you refer was before my time, and I will tell you that we take matters of closed session discussion very seriously, and the Rice requirement, for example, extremely seriously.
Well, thank you, and it was, had nothing to do personally.
No, that's fine. This is, this is a very good dialogue, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Your strategic, what do you call this thing?
Strategic plan?
Strategic plan. I see in the beginning that, Robert Roche, by the way, Team Eurofield Boulevard, you have roles, people, you have roles of the parents, the roles of the community. I think it would be nice to see what you perceive the role of the Board of Education to be, just as an addition to your strategic plan.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we will close public forum and go to the approval of the minutes for public Board of Education meeting, August twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. Well, then you have to wait for the second public forum. Yes. Mr. Tirola, Mr. Masters, any comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Ms. Antellas abstains? Mr. Masters? Yes. The closed, approval of the minutes for the closed session public meeting of August twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. So moved by Mr. Tirola? Second by Mr. Prezioso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
C.
Ms. Antellas. We'll go to committee reports. Are there any committee reports that need to be reported this evening? I guess Mr. Masters, you have one.
It's a very positive committee report, so I jumped right on it. We had a Buildings and Grounds two days ago over at Brookside. Had a couple of good things. I'm going to go into it a little depth here, so bear with me. Now, the first one, we've heard a lot of times, especially a certain person in the audience tonight, that we don't go to the state or other avenues to acquire external monies. So we are listening, and then in June, when the state actually made available over four hundred million dollars in rod grants, we actually applied for four of them. I'm going to read the four that we applied for. Project one, stopgap measures, renovation of capacity generating ten classrooms to address overcrowding at Monroe Township Middle School. Total project cost, two million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Forty percent rod grant contribution, if we get the rod grant, eight hundred ninety-five Forty percent rod grant contribution, if we get the rod grant, $895,686, which would leave us with an obligation of $1,343,529. Project two, Monroe Township Middle School windows and associated hazardous material abatement. Total project cost $1,7,447. The rod grant contribution, $402,983. Our obligation, $604,474. The Monroe Township Middle School partial re-roof and site upgrades in general. Project cost $1,592,801. The rod grant contribution, $637,120. The district obligation, $955,681. Project four, Monroe Township Middle School, high school restoration of curriculum-based tennis courts. Total project cost, excuse me, $290,486. Forty percent rod grant contribution, $116,194. District obligation, $174,292. Need me to repeat any of those? So we did submit for all four. We've made two, Buildings and Grounds and Transportation has made two of those budget priorities for the 1415, and they are the stopgap measures for the middle school to decrease the overcrowding and the partial re-roof and site upgrades. Now, if those grants go through, that'll result in savings of over $1 million to the district in the 1415 budget. So that's a big win for the district. Number two, we did get our draft demographic report. Now, how it works is they use the numbers from the October 15th enrollment, correct? Now, since it's not October 15th yet, we took last year's numbers. We do, that's why it's still a draft. We've opted to wait for this October 15 numbers, and we're going to get, hopefully shortly after that, we'll get an updated October 15, 2013 numbers. But we did get the demographic report. We did receive an excellent report about the school openings, and there was a lot of issues and things that we got in over the summer, and the staff did a great job. I'll read a couple really good ones. They upgraded the entire fiber network between Barclaybook and Brookside Schools and Oak Tree and Applegarth when the kids weren't there. Complete interior voice rewiring, installation of the voice-over IP, ISDN telephone system, which is a huge upgrade. Renovation of the multi-disabled classroom at the middle school, great. Rekeyed the entire district, so we have a district-wide, great, great-grand master keying, which I find hilarious, that's a name. We installed controlled access door card swipes at Wooden, Mill Lake, Barclaybook, Brookside, Oak Tree, so now every employee does have their own district. This is all part of that security agenda we had a while back. And it goes on and on, HVAC upgrades, a lot of great stuff that we didn't do, that the staff and the administration and the teachers did. So good job for the school opening. We also had, we removed a piece of playground equipment at Applegarth from the advice of the principal. It was deemed a hazard. That's a minor one. And then we also had a really good citizen come in, a Mr. Mike Pito. Now, he asked us, he's got an initiative that he's calling the Field of Dreams Initiative. Of course, it's involved with baseball. And I'm just going to read a statement about it. "The initiative will look to engage community involvement towards upgrades and enhancement to the baseball fields at the middle school and Oak Tree on a year-round basis. Currently," in case you didn't notice, "the operating budget only provides for field grooming to game-ready standards during the high school baseball season. The initiative looks to have these fields game-ready 12 months a year to allow for greater school and community use. In addition to soliciting local contractors and skilled parents to donate trade services," it's similar like what they did with the garden at Oak Tree. "Mr. Pito, an accomplished advertising executive, will also spearhead an effort to get paid advertisements at the baseball fields as a revenue stream for field upgrade projects such as new dugouts, scoreboard, fencing, et cetera." We asked the administration, they looked in, they assured that we have the necessary insurance coverage and its place for all the volunteers to this effort. It's authorized by the Buildings and Grounds Committee at the last meeting. So we're setting up a program whereby the high school industrial arts students also will be using, as a curriculum-based project, they'll construct most of the storage sheds and anything else we need for the fields. So it'll basically be a zero cost to the district. I think that's it. That's a lot, but, thanks.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Masters? Do you have a?
Just a comment.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Tesler.
I apologize. Just a couple more points I want to drive home about the 10 additional classrooms at the middle school. The 10 additional, since everybody knows, you know, our town is growing by leaps and bounds again, the 10 additional classrooms at the middle school, that project will be paid 40% as long as you get the rod grants by the state, we'll fund the rest, but that also will push off the need for putting trailers back in the middle school for quite a few years. And when you put trailers on there, basically, you're leasing it, it's not a good use of funds. So the 10 additional classrooms we net will, you know, when we get that, it'll be paid 40% by the state and then 60% by us, saving us money. And also, we're going to be doing this in the general budget and not going, having to go out with a bond referendum and not putting us into more debt. So those are a lot of positive things about that project.
I think we also have to recognize our director facilities, Jerry Tagg, and our excellent custodial staff for the outstanding job they did in getting all of our facilities ready for the first day of school. So thank you, Mr. Masters, for that report. Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. We had a curriculum meeting this evening where we received a demonstration of, I don't know whether it's the product Jeff or, keep me honest, or the company, relative to this tool called Gizmos, which is being proposed to help deliver subject matter content for the middle school in both math and science. We've already completed a pilot for this, I believe, in math or science?
Science.
The company's name is Explore Learning. Explore Learning is the company, Gizmo is the product. We are also actively following up with our technology folks after this presentation to ensure that the existing equipment that we have in the district will be able to support delivery of this content. But I have to tell you, from the demonstration, while it was very brief, it's pretty exciting, the level of information that we can provide our students with the ability to possibly eliminate the need for textbooks, which is absolutely incredible. And students will be able to have hands-on experience with equipment that we already have, so we wouldn't need to buy new equipment in the school, and they would also be able to do work on the same tool when they get at home. So again, if we can save buying textbooks, I believe the cost was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $4 a seat per year, and the content never goes out of date, so it's refreshed every year. So it was a pretty interesting demonstration, and again, this would be for the middle school students. We also approved some line items for the content material for language arts and a few other things. If anybody needs the complete list of the approval stuff, I can certainly give it to you. It's about eight items, but it was a really good presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Antellas.
We had a finance committee meeting on September 9th. Going to bypass item number one, it was about a video distribution proposal for $113,000, almost $114,000, until Reggie Washington can come before us and explain what it's about, as the committee was split on it. I believe the next meeting, Mr. Gorski, did he say he would be able to talk about? And we'll go to the full board.
September 25th meeting.
Okay, and that item will go before the full board for discussion. A MECA update, Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Gorski presented the most recent enrollment numbers. As of September 9th, MECA had 32 children, going over the goal of 31 to make a profit, and the early childhood education program has 42 children enrolled. And while we had had the cutoff at 40, the reason we have 42 is there's two children who are not going full-time. And Mr. Gorski also presented the financial status of MECA, and at the end of September, when the numbers come in, we'll start talking about the repayment of the loan. The June 30th, 2013 audit status, Mr. Gorski updated the committee on the status of the financial audit as of June 30th. Transaction testing, significant items testing, minutes, review, and excess surplus calculations were performed to date. And the insurance opt-out status, I'm going to let you speak about that, Mr. Gorski, because that is a significant number, and you have more of that information.
The Board of Education's negotiating committee, which was made up previously of the board president, Kathy Koloponowicz, Mr. John Leary retired from the board, Mr. Ken Chiarela. Facing the cost of the three-year MTEA contract and trying to satisfy all of the requests within, came up with a creative method of offering employees an option to opt out of all insurance and receive a stipend. $4,000 to opt out of a family plan, $2,500 for a single plan. And the initiative was proposed to have about 10% of the enrollment opt out, maybe 75 individuals to break even and cover the cost of the agreement. To date, 101 staff members have opted out at a savings of $1,776,243 net of stipends to the employees. And that, the important point here is that has more than paid for the increased costs of the collective bargaining agreement, not only for the MTEA, but the administrators, teamsters, and the central office support staff. So basically, because of that initiative, the cost to the taxpayers from that last collective bargaining agreement was savings.
Thank you, and I applaud the negotiating committee, because I remember for years we were never allowed to do this, and to the, I guess, the easement of some of the laws, it looks like it's really been worthwhile. Now, these people don't have, are going with no insurance, correct? They're going on maybe a spouse?
That's absolutely correct. Mrs. Dahl, our benefits coordinator, makes them provide proof that they have alternative insurance, so that they don't do without.
Thank you. That completes my report.
I think any time that we can negotiate a raise for our staff and still not have a cost to the district or the community, I think that's a win-win for everybody, and like Ms. Antellas said, really good negotiations. Anyone else have a committee report? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hamilton?
My pleasure, thank you. Before I start my report, I want to take this opportunity, just to reiterate what you said, and give my thanks to the staff, especially our incredible custodial team, for one of the best school openings ever. Our school opening was exceptional, no glitches, very few transportation calls, but a very, very good opening. I'd also like to share with the board that we received our final NJASK and HSPA scores yesterday. Principals are confirming the data now, and we will have a full student achievement data report for the board at the September 25th Board of Ed meeting. Now, moving on to the superintendent's report, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that personnel items A through X be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarela, Mr. Masters, are there any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, all, recuse Q.
Recuse Q. So noted. Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poit?
Yes, except no on item W for Noos and Tringali.
Yes, and all, no on W.
So noted. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through X passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to board action items, Madam Board President and members of the board, it is recommended by the superintendent that board action items A through I be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarela? Second by Mr. Masters. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poit?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through I passes.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Then we will go to the business administrator's report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through G be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Chiarela, second by Mr. Masters. Mr. Masters, you have a question?
The ACES thing, remember, because that sticks out in my head, the name is funny to me. Sorry, you're right. The ACES, which is B on the Buildings and Insurance Report. What is that? We discussed that a bunch of times. I think it's positive, right? Not prepared.
Yes, the ACES is a purchasing consortium for electric and natural gas, and it's an energy aggregation program of the New Jersey School Boards Association, New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, and the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. ACES runs aggregate procurement programs to save money for over 400 districts through bulk purchasing of electric and natural gas. So they put these commodities out to bid, and various energy providers bid on them, and then the bid's awarded by law to the lowest bidder. The savings to the district from the ACES program is that last year, for electric, savings of 35% below the standard rate, which is provided by, in Monroe's case, JCPN, was achieved through this bidding process with the consortium. 35% lower rates than through JCPN, their base rate. And this year, the rates are 18% lower than the standard electric rate. For natural gas, it's a little more difficult to get a handle on it because it changes so frequently, but at a look back for last year, the ACES rates for natural gas was 6% below that of the local standard for natural gas.
Do you hazard the guess on the dollar amounts, or no?
I'd have to calculate that for you, sir.
This is like the middlesex regional education, same thing.
Yes, yes, it's a purchasing consortium to buy in bulk for these services, and in this case, commodities. And the purchasing power of over 400 districts enables much lower prices than elsewhere.
So that would be considered shared services?
It certainly is, and it's part of our budget statement, and it's reviewed by the county business administrator every year, because districts like Monroe are strongly encouraged, if not required, to engage in as many shared services agreements as possible. And this is one great example that we've had in the district for a few years, where we're achieving really handsome savings.
Anything we could do to save?
Good job.
Mr. Prezioso, question?
Yes, Michael, on item E and F, page 19, are we approving both of these, or, because there's very little change, the E to F?
Is the E rating?
Yes, that was addressed earlier. The E rate is a correction of a typo. What's being approved here is for the 1213 and 1314 school years for E rate. And E rate is another wonderful initiative that the district has engaged in to save money, if I may add. Whereas we have a fee, or percentage of the savings paid to a provider, and on everybody's electric and technology bills, there's a tax imposed by the federal government, and this tax is divvied up to school districts who participate in this E rate funding. And last year, I believe, we saved about $200,000 by participating in this program.
Anyone else? Mr. Tesler?
Just real quick, what's D? What's the web media hosting? What is it hosting? Item D.
We have a TV channel that's another shared service agreement with the Monroe Township Municipality, and the fee for that annually for the web program hosting is $2,988, and it's shared equally between the school district and the municipality. That's another shared service agreement that's delineated in our budget statement.
I think that's like for posting the board of ed meetings and the town meetings, that's the hosting for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poit?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through G passes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the board president's report, and I have a few things. We had an opening day convocation, and it was a really great opening day for staff on Tuesday, September 3rd. The morning went really well, everyone was really excited about being back and positive about the upcoming school year, and we even had some entertainment when Dr. Hamilton started the convocation off with a song. And Ira refused to started the convocation off with a song, and Ira refused to sing. So, if that morning was any indication of how the school year is going to go, it's going to be a really good school year. I would just have a good feeling. Board goals, we held a board retreat on Saturday, August 24th, where the Board of Education set goals for this school year, and one of the goals, which we adopted in the superintendent's report, was to develop a budget philosophy, parameters, and framework for developing the 2014-2015 school budget. That budget philosophy conversation is going to be held by the members of the board at our September 25th board meeting, and the results of that conversation will go into the making of the school budget for next year. We had a similar conversation last year during a special board meeting, but the board decided this year that we would have it during one of our regular meetings, so that more of the public will be able to attend. NJSBA, which is School Boards Meeting, Mr. Christopher Jones, who is with the NJSBA Government Relations Department, has scheduled a meeting with Senator Linda Greenstein and the board presidents from those towns represented by the senator. The purpose of this meeting is to familiarize our legislators, in this case, Ms. Green, Senator Greenstein, with the New Jersey School Boards and the school districts that she represents, to foster good relationships in line of communication, and to make them aware of some of the main concerns that we have with policy coming from the state concerning education and how it affects our districts. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that meeting, so Mr. Poy has graciously said he would be attending in my place, and I'm sure that you will have a information for us at the next meeting, so thank you very much for doing that. And lastly, some other good news coming for our district is Dr. Hamilton has been asked to be part of a select team of educational leaders from New Jersey and New York to visit China to explore the possibility of a language exchange program. China is looking to examine the feasibility of sharing educational resources via technology to infuse the English language into China and Mandarin into the United States. This trip is exploratory, and no commitments will be made. The American International Organization is sponsoring this trip and will fully fund it, so there'll be no cost to our district. I believe having our superintendent attend this really important and exciting venture will add positive exposure to Monroe, and I'm sure that you'll be giving us more details as you go about it.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you for sharing that.
Congratulations, Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Excellent, it is really, really good. Now we'll go to other Board of Education business, number fifteen on the agenda. If there's any other business by any member of the Board of Education. Mr. Poy?
Yes, and I'm glad that our board attorney is here tonight, because she may be able to help us understand whether or not there's anything illegal about what I am asking the board to consider. As, as many of you know, I ran for the board last year for the first time, and it was quite a learning experience in terms of how difficult it is for a candidate to become known to the residents of the community. We do not have our own newspaper, although the Sentinel does somewhat serve a very useful service, and those newspapers do a rather nice job of covering the township, but unfortunately, not everyone gets the Sentinel. Some of the other newspapers don't run statements at all of the candidates. I know last year, none of the newspapers ran statements by the candidates. And roughly fifty percent or more of our registered voters reside in our adult communities. Some of our adult communities are essentially closed. You cannot leave information there, in their clubhouses, you cannot leave flyers, you cannot distribute flyers in those homes. So, many of our, and, and I think those of you who pay attention to this, would know that a very high percentage of our adults that live in those communities do vote, and yet, they have no access to information. So, I'm not running this year, but, but as I said, I became very much aware of how difficult it is for a candidate to become known to the voters of the community, and that is why it's not much of a surprise, and I heard this even before I was, the election occurred, that it's usually the top three candidates that get elected, and we know why. The uninformed voter, they see eight, twelve, fifteen names on the list, boom, 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 they do the first three, nobody else gets considered. And there could be other people that are quite able, and would be a good member of the board. So I was, I've been giving this quite a bit of thought over the last couple of weeks, because we're now approaching another election. Some of our board members are up for reelection, and I think altogether, we have thirteen different people in the community that are running this year. How do they get their message out there? Occasionally, our PTO, one of our PTOs, will have a public forum, which I think is great, and that is moderated by the League of Women Voters, but unfortunately, it occurs, last year when they did that, I would say there was maybe a hundred to a hundred and twenty people there. It was a good turnout, but still, it was limited when you consider all the voters we have. So I was hoping, since we do tape our board meetings, and those are then played on Channel 28, since we do tape municipal meetings, and they are displayed on Channel 28, I was hoping that somehow, we can find a way that if there is a public forum, if, if the PTO or somebody else is running a public forum, somehow, that could be videotaped, and then that videotape be played on Channel 28, you know, on a regular basis, ongoing basis, between the time of the meeting, of the forum, and the actual election. I just think it's, it's a good thing to do, particularly in this community that we live in, and I wanted to bring that to this board, because that taping might, I don't know, I don't know who does the taping for the municipality, I know we have people here who do the taping, but there would be some expense involved in that. When I thought about it, I says, well, I don't think the board would be doing anything wrong here, because we're not advocating for any particular candidate, and we're trying to present all of the candidates for the public to consider. So I'm, I'm bringing up this idea, and as I said, I'm glad the attorney is here, so that maybe she can look into it, or give it some thought, or give us her opinion on it, and then maybe at the next meeting, which is September 25th, we would be in a position to actually say, this is what can be done, relative to this. I don't know if anyone else has a comment on this or not, but that's my other business.
I'm going to let Dr. Hamilton respond to that.
We do, as you know, have an interlocal agreement regarding Channel 28, and that interlocal agreement prohibits its use for a political function, political purposes. However, the access channel can be used if all candidates are participating, and all candidates are asked the same question, and all have equal opportunity. Now, how the funding for that would work is not addressed in the interlocal agreement, and maybe Vi can give us some direction on that, but the channel can be used for that within the guidelines established within the interlocal agreement.
Vi?
Yeah, I'd be happy to look specifically at the issue of whether or not any board funds could be used for the purpose of supporting a forum, because I think that's what you're asking, Mr. Poy, to, to put a fine tune to the, what's essentially the issue that's raised. We know that, for example, with respect to a board election, the board is limited, the board budget, let me, let me refine that, with respect to a board budget, the board is limited to expending funds to educate the public with respect to the substance of the budget, but can't, for example, publish a newsletter that says, you know, cheer leaves for the budget, and says, go out there, because if you don't vote for the budget, bad things are going to happen. There's actually case law on that, the Precipiny Troy Hills case, I litigated a case for a school board years ago, in which a school board was accused of spending public dollars seeking to have the public vote favorably for a budget, and we prevailed, because it was merely an educational newsletter. Why am I raising that? I'm raising that because there are very circumscribed limits with respect to how board funds can be spent during an election season, which, you know, coincidentally happened to be the time when budgets were approved on, under, generally under the old system. So I'd like to reserve and, and take a look at that, and have an answer for you for the next meeting. I certainly will have it well before the next meeting, and I can give that information to Mr. Gorsky, and you can have it before that, but to the extent there needs to be a, a public discussion of it, or a, a public representation with respect to it, certainly the board would be in a position to let the public know about it at that point.
I appreciate that, and I would like to add, I'd forgotten it until I was listening to you there, I did reach out to the New Jersey School Boards Association, just to see what they might tell me about this, and it appears that there are school districts are, there are, well, let me put it this way, there are communities where they do just the type of thing I'm proposing, where all the candidates have an opportunity to make a statement, possibly, it's being moderated, questions are being asked, that is taped, and the, the field representative even mentioned that quite often, these are hosted by a PTO, which means that it is being held within a school building, but it is being hosted by the PTO. So there are communities that can do this type of thing, and I would just like to see us do it. I think it would be, it's, it's a healthy, democratic type of thing to do.
The, the, and I think that's true, but let, let me say that I think that the definition may be right there, and that is the PTO in the, in the situation that you're describing, did the funding, apparently, the, the presentation and the funding, and used the school facilities or the board's facilities for that purpose, and probably went through, I'm conjecturing here, the appropriate process for purposes of reserving a school facility. And the real issue, in any event, is how much, what if any dollars, and this is a rhetorical question, what if any dollars would need to be spent in any event, in order to support or make such a presentation, other than perhaps renting the facility? I don't know that, the answer to that question, but we can certainly take a look at it for you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Masters?
Dr. Hamilton is going to, it's an exchange program, you're going to be in China, are we getting a superintendent from China? That was actually a joke, it didn't work out too well. I thought it was, in my head, that was hilarious, I don't know.
We'll all laugh for you.
Thanks, I don't want to read some. But the other thing is, I'm, I'm so, I just want to, again, thank the teachers and the staff, and how smooth this week has been so far, it's been, it's, it's a testament to the, yeah, thanks, I just jinxed this all, of the hard work and the dedication that the staff and the support staff and administrators, and even the students have been putting in so far. It's been quiet, which is great.
Has been.
It's just a great job, and also, the, the kids that sang, in case anybody didn't know this, I actually used to sing in high school, too, and I really appreciated how hard and how talented they are to do that, and that was excellent. And again, the, what's our high school ranked, again, in the star ledger? Didn't you have those numbers from last, seventh? Was it seventh?
In the county, yes.
In the county, all right, I just want to, again, bring that up, and how great the high school is performing.
And on the list of schools to watch.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing no other Board of Education business, we will go to the closed session resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject. Board to receive attorney advice in relation to board governance issues. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
It's the Chiarella-Masters Day. Chiarella and Masters, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this time, the board will go into closed session. Should take half an hour, thirty to forty minutes. At this time, the board will reconvene into public session, and we will go to the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak? I'm going to let this young man with the glasses speak, because he's been waiting a long time. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Please leave, give your name and address for the record.
Thanks, Sean O'Connor, One Julia Drive. I'm a alumnus of the high school, class of two thousand and eight, and a Fulbright scholar. I just want to say, I, I want to applaud the Board of Education for taking the step in one of the first high schools in New Jersey to roll out iPads and technology across the entire school. I, I think it's great what you're doing. I just want to urge you guys to take the next step and to go a little bit further. This year, we're going to spend $438,000 on the lend-lease program for the iPad. Last year, you spent about $66,000 on textbooks. This year, you've budgeted to spend $88,389, and that's an extraordinary large sum of money that I think might be able to be cut from the budget without harming the students. There's a lot of resources out there now, open source textbooks from OpenStax, the California Open Source Textbook Program, college open textbooks from Merlot, Project Gutenberg, and these are quality textbooks that have zero cost. There's no marginal cost with reproducing these, and the creators of these textbooks have given them under Creative Commons License for free for educational institutions to use. In addition to that, there's a language program called Duolingo, which is more effective than Rosetta Stone, and the most effective language learning software available, and it's completely free, and I think it would be a great benefit to our students to have it preloaded on iPad, so that they can continue to work outside of their classroom on this. And just one more project that I've been involved with, it's called Crypton Community College. It's a combination of a book club meets a TED Talk, and they're four-week classes that you curate with your friends, completely free, and I would love to make those resources available and known to the students, so that after hours, they can kind of take control of their own learning. And I want to know if you guys have been considering open source technologies around textbooks, and what the district has done for that.
I'm going to let Mr. Kaufman answer this, because this is his area, and then if you'd like to speak to Dr. Gorman after that, he's our, you know, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, after the meeting.
Yeah. I'll take the first shot, so I'm going to be brief. I don't think you could have probably, well, you could have probably timed your question a little better if you were literally here at the board meeting just before this one last month, and I would definitely encourage you to go online and review the video. We, and he'll, he'll keep me honest, have been aggressively looking to get out of the ties of textbooks. We keep hearing, because we, Ira and some of the other board members have heard even as early as, you know, when we went to this new program, on how little even the textbooks we have today are being used by students. Being a former student, I'm not going to tell you something you don't know. We are, to answer your question is, we can't get there fast enough. We have even gone to the next level of, you'll see in the preview from last month, or last week, two weeks ago, whatever it was, Courtney Pepe, one of our teachers here at the school, has already published, I believe, three course materials to I University that we have built here in-house, that is directly connected to our curriculum, the way we teach, the way we deliver material, and we are, in addition to the open source concept that you're talking about, we are looking at every avenue possible to, to grab tech, information that's out there in the internet. I've, I've expressed this to my fellow board members here, I happen to have a child who is a school at Rutgers, he's at the School of Engineering, and I don't think anything gets me more frustrated than to see him come home and sit down in front of YouTube and see an instruction from a professor, and I've asked him several times, why are you do, I am paying ridiculous amount of money for you to go to Rutgers, why are you on YouTube? And unfortunately, the answer is simple. A lot of times, the professors, English is a second language, especially in the engineering curriculum, and it's tough for him to understand what the professors are saying. So it infuriates me as a parent, as, and as somebody who's spending money at Rutgers, to have this level of education, to see him on YouTube. What's up with that? Right? So, we are aggressively looking at every technology available out there, to both lower cost and increase education across the entire district, not just for the high school. We talked about Gizmo today for the middle school, and we want to figure out the best way to efficiently move forward, because it, it's a balance, right? We want to give the technology, everybody likes technology, but there's a cost, a big one, and it's the hardware and everything else, the infrastructure. So we want to make sure when we do it, we do it right, and we, we, we move forward in the most efficient, economical, educationally advantageous way possible, and Jeff, you can jump in after that.
Take Dr. Hamilton's card, set up an appointment with me, and let's sit down and talk about all those other options. We have, we're very eclectic in our approach of content creation and sharing of content. We have, we're very eclectic in our approach of content creation and sharing of content, and we're always open to especially free resources. But there's lots of different barriers to get to the, you know, place where we want to go to, so we have to take that into consideration as we move forward. But I really am very interested in sitting down and talking to you about that.
Great, thank you very much. Just on a side note, I would like to urge the board to maybe get pitchers of water and get rid of the water bottles. I spent the last year living in a country where they're plagued by our country's waste and water bottles. When we burn them, they get shipped outside of our country and burnt. We, you know, use about 30 million barrels of oil a year producing water bottles just for our country, so just food for thought. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mark Klein, 53, Turnberry. I'm going to repeat again, as I did last time, and I'll do this every meeting until the election. Michael Klein, who's running for the school board, is not Mark Klein. So I want everybody to come out and vote, but I want you all to know, it is not me. Now, it is very, very important for Kathy, Dr. Hamilton, and Mike Gorski to attend the next planning board meeting, Thursday, September 26th at 7:00. It's going to be all public. They are weighing the impact to the schools. The three of you can supply all the pertinent information about the problems that we're having. Mr. Masters?
Yes.
I have to congratulate you for doing a fabulous job in representing this district at Middlesex County Education Services Commission. Your predecessor did not. I would also like you to speak to Dr. Finkelstein about the Transportation Department. He did make an offer to take over our Transportation Department, saving us upwards of $100,000 a year. Doug Poy. Two years ago, while I was still on the board, we asked that the administration write a column every month that would go into the newspapers of all the adult communities, keeping them up to date as to what goes on on the board. Our community, you've been doing. The only way the people in the senior community are going to know what's going on is if there's a column written every month, and that's easy enough to do. The last thing, and I'm sorry she's not here. I am fed up with false rumors, and I'm glad that the attorney is here. False rumors being spread about myself and my girlfriend by somebody on the board. Now, my understanding is if I was a public, don't cut me off, if I was a public elected official, they can say whatever they want about me. I am a resident. The person that's spreading these rumors is a board member. The rumors are lies. They are false, and it has to stop, and it's been done by her before, and she gets away with it. She is to be reprimanded, as she did to other people on the board in past years. Nothing happens. She gets away with murder. When she states that I started dating my girlfriend four days after my wife died, that is pathetic. And she said it to somebody who's very responsible, who's willing to come to this board or this closed session and testify it to everything that she had said. This has to stop. She has to be reprimanded in public, and something has to be done to protect me and my personal life. I have done absolutely nothing wrong. In fact, the lady that I dated, my wife picked out, and we'll let it go with that. Thank you very much for the time, without cutting me off.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the public?
Deborah Schneider, Eight Regal Court. I am candidate number two on the Board of Ed elections. I have been a resident of Monroe since 2002, but it was a partial year in 2002. And I pulled out my back taxes, and in 2003, my school taxes were $3,054. My present tax bill, my school taxes are $10,172. Quite an increase. In the August 22nd meeting, Mr. Poy stated that there was going to be a demographic study done because of all the new housing that's going up, the 749 units in Route 33 in Provinville and the 522 in Mountsmills. In addition to that, we have North Point Estates, another 167 homes. We have 130 homes at Monroe Chase. Where are we putting these children? And how are you going to hold the costs down so that my school taxes in five years are at $20,000, and I can no longer afford to live in this town? No comments?
No, thank you for your comments. As I said earlier in the meeting, we will be having a board philosophy discussion at our September 25th meeting. A lot of that information will be part of the discussion. Anyone else from the public?
Stephen Ryback, 23, Riviera. I just want to pick up on where you left. You mentioned that you're going to have a meeting with Senator Greenstein. On the issue that you just heard about, as far as the overdeveloping and the high-density population, and what's happening to the schools, and how are we going to pay for this, she's very well aware of the problem, because I and my committee, which represents five developments in Monroe, have met with her. So you can certainly, if you would express your concern about this kind of development and go to planning board meetings and voice your problem, I know this has to be, not only for Monroe, it has to be in other communities as well. And I'm sure you could join with other Boards of Education, as I suggested in the past, and have a much larger voice, and maybe a commitment from some senators. I know Assemblyman D'Angelo is coming on the 26th to support the taxpayers of Monroe against all this out-of-control development. I'd like to see some representation from the school board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Lester, 44 Avenue I. I would just like an update on the total amount of legal fees we've accrued for the Jamesburg lawsuit.
Mrs. Lester, that information is not readily available. It's going to have to be compiled by segregation of the bills and the hourly charges from Jamesburg, and that takes a bit of legwork.
And when will you have it for me?
It can be done.
Yeah, sure.
We'll have it by the next meeting.
Okay. And I just have one other question. Was a high school teacher fired during the last school year, 2012-13, outright fired?
Repeat your question.
Was there a teacher fired during the 2012-2013 school year?
Yes.
Why?
That's a personnel matter that we're not at liberty to discuss publicly.
Okay. Was the person fired for being a possible endangerment to the welfare of a child?
It's a personnel matter, and we're not able to discuss that publicly.
So you're not answering that question?
That is the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public forum. And our next scheduled public Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, September 25th, 2013, 7:00 PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn. Ms. Antellas, Mr. Kaufman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's the only one that I can prove this.
Abstentions, meeting is adjourned.